Okay, I hope everyone can hear me outside. I know everyone in here can hear me. Tonight, we salute Oland Tangi students who are outstanding scholars and have achieved recognition in the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program. A total of 46 students from Oland Tangi's four high schools earned a commended or semifinalist status as a result of their performance on the 2020 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Once recognized, please proceed to the front of the room to receive your plaque where your picture will be taken. Upon completion of the photo, please exit to your left. And I'm going to apologize ahead of time if I mispronounce anybody's name. Okay, 18 Oland Tangi school students have qualified as commended scholars in the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program. These students are among the approximately 1.6 million high school students across the country who entered the program by taking the Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. These students placed among the top 50,000 highest scorers. Although commended students do not continue on in the competition for National Merit Scholarships, many of these students become candidates for special scholarships sponsored by corporations and businesses. Congratulations to our commended students. As your name is called, please come to the front to accept your plaque and have your picture taken with Superintendent Mark Rave and Board President Mindy Patrick. From Berlin High School, Jackson Dunlop. From Liberty High School, Kalen Yang. Hanson Ma. Arvin Nar. Elizabeth Okanak. Devu Patel. Sarafu Portaleen. Adam Rawl. Swarman Ramadi. Kyle Schwager. Isabel Sheik in absentia. From Oland Tangi High School, Udita Kumari. Erin Shetty. From Orange High School, Alexander Felderin. Jeffrey Kaminsky. Alexander Lima in absentia. Sindhu Mendrabupu. In absentia, sorry. Grace Wang. And Catherine Wu in absentia. In addition, 28 Oland Tangi school students have qualified as semifinalists in the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program, giving them a chance to compete for approximately 7,600 scholarships worth more than $30 million. Approximately 16,000 out of 1.5 million high scorers qualified as semifinalists. The semifinalists represent the highest scorers on the test. Oland Tangi school students named 2021 National Merit Scholar Program semifinalists are: From Berlin High School, David Cutina. Madison Laffitt. Yusuf Rashid. Bennett Topner in absentia. Sidney Webb. From Liberty High School, Reem Ahmed in absentia. Alexander Chen. Samuel Ding. Ryan Joseph. Starthik Muhanti. Sidney Rawl. Shara Sakamuru. Sindhu Sharma. Katherine Sullenberger. Sana Thompson. Dorian Tretow. Curtis Z. Kathy Zoom. From Oland Tangi High School, Kamakashi Oshno Aramagaretti. Akash Nalari. Ishu Swanee. Colin Somerville. Abigail Swaneyos. From Orange High School, Eamon Hurley in absentia. Pranav Krishnan. Yish Patel. Carter Padula. Kylie Tu. And from Oland Tangi High School, Erin Shetty, commended scholar. Yes. Congratulations to these outstanding students, their families, and their teachers. Oh, wait, do we have everybody? Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you for being here this evening to help us celebrate.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, it will get sound now. Are you ready, Mr. Redd?
We're ready, we're ready. Okay, I'm going to go back just again, I'd like to start the presentation by sharing what we shared with the community and staff back in July, and then we again shared at our last board meeting, which is the attendance models that we developed. Again, want to reemphasize and reiterate that we have not deviated from plans and sharing it with everyone continually to have students and staff participating in both the hybrid attendance model and the committed distance learning model. Again, I want to reemphasize to the board and the community, while it may appear based on this graphic, that there is a direct alignment with the level guidelines by county. Just because we are a certain color one way or the other doesn't necessarily dictate. Those are one factor and one thing for us to consider. As I noted throughout the pandemic and this experience, the district will continue to make decisions about our students' staff attendance locally unless, of course, the governor shuts schools down and go into that high spread area. So, as we shared last meeting, we are, we have, as we consider which of the attendance models we are on, our driving question as we make all of our decisions this year has been how to maximize student learning while minimizing the risks for students and staff. And I want to reemphasize, both of these factors have equal importance in our decision making. They are not, one doesn't weigh more than the other. So, you see there, there are several data points and pieces of information that we have been reviewing and monitoring for the last six to eight weeks, depending on when data became available. So, there you see, since the start of school year, we've been monitoring our local data, and as we know, this matters most to our students, our staff, and our parents. Our data, as expected, has slowly shown us what we knew would be true. As we return to our school buildings and our jobs, we return together, we will have positive cases of the virus. The state level, the county level attendance, in order to get to yellow, you got to be less than 60 cases per 100,000. One of them? Yellow. It's 25. Okay, this is an example of one of the CATS systems, and it shows our attendance here, our attendance here, our Oland Tangi attendance area, since the start of the pandemic, way back when, and where we are today. Our case count has been consistently higher over the past three to four months than we were, than when we were shut down by the state in the spring. And on September 1, when school begins, you can see moderately higher case count as we move forward for the last two months, which again, that's what we expected as we're all back in school. You see here, as we look into the following slide, we take into account that while we now have eight weeks of data review, we are also know, we also know that there are many complexities and factors that comprise that data. As one of the two largest school districts in the state that has students attending school in person in any form of attendance model, Oland Tangi continues to trend higher than other districts with new case counts per 1,000 students. The other, one other large district that's in a hybrid model of Southwest City schools. While we are still following all health and safety protocols and know that there is not community spread in our schools, our positive case counts continue to rise. And this graph highlights an assumption about what's happening after 4:00 PM in shape. Social interaction and minimal social distancing in small groups and gatherings. I feel confident that the mitigation thing we're doing during, we're doing during the school day, what we're doing during athletic events and activities and all those kind of things are working. But this also indicates other things that are happening in our school community that are not slowing the spread of the virus. Those are the same kind of things that the governor talks about. So, here we have a compare other Ohio districts that are conducting in-person full attendance models and speaking regularly with other superintendents of these districts, we know that our lead school safety protocols are virtually the same. Looking at being more Mason and La Coda as an example, districts that have been in full in-person attendance since August, you can see that their case rates are dramatically different than ours. So, again, if all the districts are not the same, then behavior outside of school impacts those case rates. So, when you look at it from a case rate on students per positive case, we're not in a good position there. Here we show how Oland Tangi schools is trending against other area districts to give cases per 1,000 students. And again, while our case numbers are higher than other area districts, we know the community spread is not happening in our school buildings, but our outside school hours and social settings. Now, again, this is, this one was a positive one for us, and we're happy that that is trending down and in more in line with other area districts. This one's another one that's important, while we review our rate of students being sent home ill per week, we not sense our rate is going to get better. As we move into the cold and flu, the traditional cold and flu season, we anticipate our numbers of students who are ill to grow. And most concerning is the fact that our quarantine rate will increase significantly as many cold and flu symptoms are also similar to COVID symptoms. So, as a reminder though, to everyone listening, the Delaware General Health District determines who is quarantined based on the contact tracing that maybe we don't determine who gets quarantined. But that is a huge factor for us to consider as we decide how to move forward. Because in talking with the areas of the other student attendance, you are in full attendance models, again, districts that are similar to us in size of buildings, the number of students they have quarantined is very, very concerning. This substitute fill rate is also critical because we need to have enough staff to teach and to supervise our students. So, we're closely monitoring our sub-fill rate week to week. The reality is the potential number of staff assigned to quarantine or isolation has a direct impact on the operation of a particular building and the entire district. Our goal is to keep our doors open and have minimal disruption of learning and routines. We cannot stay open if we cannot staff our buses or our classrooms. To that end, we are actively recruiting substitutes for the district, because you can see there that the pool of available substitute teachers is down significantly, considering we don't want to come into the school, or at least in sub, with the COVID condition. So, that's a review of a lot of the critical data indicators that we're looking at. I do want to talk for a minute about our committed distance learning program. So, as we've mentioned previously, students in this program will have the opportunity to change attendance models at the start of the spring semester. So, we are going to send surveys to these families in November to give it an intent for the spring semester. Attendance in this model impacts the hybrid model as well when we consider staffing on class offerings. So, here's some of the things that I have been thinking about and arguing with myself daily, daily, hourly, five a minute. And unfortunately for some of you who have to endure the phone calls, you could be arguing going on in my head. Because I can argue in any way, I can, I can argue this any way you want to argue. And, and that's because the data does not point us in a clear direction. It simply doesn't. And while all of us appreciate objective data, we know that the information we collected just doesn't give us the clear answer that we would love to have. We believe we're being successful on the hybrid model because we've been able to minimize risk and continue to bring students and teachers into our buildings each day. Is it perfect? None. We know it is not perfect in any way. And I know in talking to all of you, we have specifically had children still in school. You want your kids in school five days a week, just like virtually everyone in the community. But this attendance model allows our students to stay engaged academically during the times they're in school, during the times they're virtually attending school, and will allow them to stay engaged academically if they are in deep quarantine. It allows us to provide social distancing and keep risk at a minimum while providing routine inconsistency. So, those are big factors. We know what we're doing is working to a certain degree. We know we can get better with our hybrid schedule. So, I am aware that some of our students are challenged with this schedule, and some are challenged by the distance learning model. And some of our students are finding more success than even in their normal routine. I've talked to a lot of kids who like the hybrid model. So, again, the opinions are all over the place. Regardless, while we know that we're finding success overall, we know that students are struggling academically and emotionally. And parents and students have to continue to address those concerns with their teachers, with their building administrators, to address the academic and social emotional challenge that those kids are experiencing. We want to provide all the support we can in the hybrid model, just like we want to provide all this support in the traditional model. So, a significant amount of work is going into developing this hybrid attendance model. Considering changing up the attendance model creates, here at the midsemester, creates a number of operational and logistical challenges. And while I'm confident we could tackle these, I don't believe we can change the, that a change to full attendance provides the best opportunities for continued learning because of the new social distancing amongst staff and students. So, again, if we move to a full attendance model, there are going to be operational challenges and logistical challenges that come with that. There'll be a number of people who will want to go into the CPL program that was offered to them in July and August, that isn't available now. So, that's going to be a big challenge moving forward. So, looking forward, as we are observing a rise in positive cases throughout Ohio, the beginning of the cold and flu season, holiday breaks, and a significant increase in the amount of time people will spend indoors in close contact. All of those are factors that I think change the dynamics of what we're experiencing. And as I said before, when we started this back in July and August, our numbers were okay in July and August because we've been apart. I think our numbers are okay now because of being on the hybrid model, being outdoors. All the athletic seasons except the volleyball were outdoors. So, it's different when you start moving things indoors. The, you know, it's national, statewide and nationally. We had spikes after Memorial Weekend, after July Fourth Weekend, after Regular Day Weekend, when people naturally have social gatherings. Those aren't going to be diminished during the holiday season coming up. All of those are changes in, in, in our school behavior that are going to be impacted as we move forward. And I'm concerned that if we change our model now, we'll see an increase in positive cases and an increase in the quarantine cases. So, those are all the things that I've been arguing with myself about. I've been debating with our leadership team. I discussed with each individual at some point over the course of the last two weeks and of course, of the last six to eight weeks. So, as I go again, to review our driving question, how do we maximize student learning while minimizing risks for students and staff? And I'd like to again say that those two, those two points are equal in our decision making. So, we actually spent a considerable amount of time discussing what our next step should be, how we should proceed and throughout and kept that driving question in front of us. As we look at our data, how our students and staff are faring, we believe that changing the attendance model now will only increase the health and safety risks for our students and staff. Our goal is to maintain stability with the education we provide. And therefore, we plan to maintain this model through the first semester. If we do this, if we maintain this model through the first semester, we have a very high likelihood of going, if, I'm sorry, if we do not do this, if we do not maintain our model through first semester, I believe we have a very high likelihood of having to go even more remote. And that is the last thing we want to do. With the timing of the holidays and behaviors due to COVID fatigue, we believe there's additional risk that is risk I'm simply not willing to take. So, I know you've all received, we've received, I've received, people on the leadership team have received, nobody in our district can go anywhere and not hear from somebody what they feel about the pandemic, about our school attendance model, snapshots of these perspectives. I'm writing to you today as a concerned parent. I disagree with your decisions and your assessment. It appears your acquiescence to political pressure that's being handed to the general public. And that can apply from either side. My son goes to Orange High School and is doing in-person model because there were not enough classes offered for him to attend five days a week online. I'm balancing the mental health of my child. As a family of two working parents, one child virtual and one in-person, I know. I'm writing as a parent caution against this decision, whatever the decision. My daughter continues to do well with the hybrid plan. I write as a parent and a nurse. I could go on and on and on and on. But suffice it to say, each person who writes in to share their thoughts with us, shares their heartfelt perspective as a parent, we honor, we truly do honor because that's their perspective as a parent. Their opinion brings their personal and often professional experiences into their perspective as well as ages and stages of their children. And I know it's all over the place. And while none of these perspectives isn't, while each of these perspectives is important and well-intentioned, none of these individual perspectives must make, must make a decision about the entire all intents and school system that takes the entire picture of our district into consideration, into consideration. And I recognize that people will continue to appeal to us in one decision or another. But again, at the end of the day, I will continue to make decisions in the best interest of all of our students while considering the overall district and open moment of those in it. So, I think this is going to give us some certainty. I challenge our staff to go above and beyond what they're already doing to make whatever they're doing in this hybrid attendance model even better. I challenge them to make it even better. I challenge the kids who may not be giving their maximum effort on their virtual days to make maximum effort and then make it better. We have to make this work. Our first quarter is coming to an end. See two additional board meetings. We're going to have obviously the holiday winter breaks. And our first day of second semester is January 19. We'll continue to monitor the conditions. As we get the hybrid attendance model, it's our intention, if things are maintained, that I think there is a point in time where we just have to say we may move into that full-time attendance model. I'm not going to commit, ask this first semester. Again, I think I, I'm doing a conversation with a lot of staff, I've talked to every principal in the district this week, asked them for their opinions from their personal perspective and their personal staff perspective. And overwhelmingly, again, people want to be back. But overwhelmingly, people believe that spinning in this attendance model gives us the best chance to maintain some level of in-person education. So with that, I will begin questioning the board. Mrs. Wagner, please.
So, on the slides that you showed us that had Lakota and Mason on them, they are back full-time, but they had, did they have more cases? I just wanted to get.
So, they, they actually got, they have, that's actually students per positive case. You can see there's Dr. Betty. Trying to bail me out of this one.
Yes, you, and Lakota, and there's one positive case for every 667 students. Whereas in Mason, there's one for every 238 students. Both districts have been back full-time for the entire first semester. And they have a very different rate of positive. And that's showing that it's impacting districts differently given that we're all having the same safety protocols in school, how school behavior is impacting how it's spreading at school.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, we, this is a pretty strong, you know, again, you look at the number of kids cases per, for students here, that, that is a, you know, we're on the bad side of this scale.
Right, because we're not back full-time yet.
Right. So again, it's something would be if we were back full-time. You know, I, I'm not going to say that. I talked to the health commissioner today, and she said, you say assumption is saying your cases were double and more important, your contacts were double. Now, you know, there was another development just yesterday, the CDC has released new guidelines with contact tracing, where it used to be a certain fifteen minutes mask, no mask, within fifteen, sixteen for fifteen minutes, you were not in contact. Now, it's a fifteen minutes over a 24-hour period. And mask, no mask, and, and so, the way I, I would anticipate, if we have a positive case in a classroom, everybody in that classroom is going to be in contact because of how they're going to move around. Especially in an elementary, absolutely. Over the course of a high school, one kid could have, they're bigger than six classes, and 25 kids per class, then you're talking 150 contacts. That's 150 kids out of school for 10 days. So,
And if we were back full-time, how do we teach those kids that are in quarantine?
That's a, I mean, we, we've discussed that. Teachers are still going to be working full-time with the kids they have in the building, you know, and it's, that's a challenge. I mean, that, that is, that is a huge concern in terms of the academic impact. You know, it, this five days is more as opposed to ten full days. And that's just a huge consideration that impacts, you know, the risk level of coming back. It's not, you know, Mason, at one point, you had 600 kids in quarantine.
Did you consider any other, like, days going back? Like Pickerington, last I talked to my sister earlier in the week, they were going to do four days a week, starting November 16th, taking off on Wednesday, and then try to go five days a week after Thanksgiving.
Well, I can tell you that when we started, and we started when it was August 48th, I thought, I thought we were going to be in hybrid quarters. I really, that was my first thought, quarters. And then started getting into it. First, ended with court. I was shooting my mouth off by the end of the first quarter. My team was being rock solid, as have you all, in supporting and helping with this decision. It's a lot of conversation, a lot of conversation with a lot of teachers, a lot of presidents. Lady Nancy, then, Stan, NSA, usual, Senator Daniel, Attorney General, Association Presidents. You know, they've all said, and so, you know, I'm, so when I stayed here two weeks ago, I fully expected to be standing there in front of you telling you we were going to go back to school full-time. But I just kept, you know, obviously, we were having more cases throughout the state, throughout the county, throughout the district, throughout, we had more contacts. We had seven positive cases just today. Another number of contacts that has not been traced through. So, we did consider a lot of things. But I kept coming back to, so we start back in beginning of first, second semester, second quarter, and then we hit Thanksgiving, that time period. So, we started talking about how about December 1st, on the back end of, after Thanksgiving. And it just kept coming, I just kept coming up against something, some types of events that I thought were going to have a negative impact on us being able to maintain an in-person school model. And is it, is it out of, I guess it's, there is a period of unknown that it goes into this and whether or not, you know, I had a real good conversation with a principal. He told me, you know, he was, he was all in, let's go. And then, that was a week ago. And then on Sunday, a very good friend of his, fifty years old, in good health, with a little bit of high blood pressure, but otherwise perfectly healthy. Got COVID on a Saturday. When he tested positive on Saturday, he went into the emergency room on Sunday and was dead. Because I got a different perspective. And again, I'm not, I, I don't, I'm not a fear, I don't want to be a fear monger, I don't want, what I want is for our kids to be in school. And I know right now, we have a model that a lot And I know right now, we have a model that allows our kids to be in school. And I know, we know we can do this and we can do it better. And I, again, I'm going to challenge our staff to do this better. To not give in to the fatigue of what they're feeling. Fight through this rest of this first semester so that we can hopefully get back full-time. Again, I think we're going to learn information every, every day that we go through.
Okay, earlier this week, an email went out to parents addressing the change and how we're going to be reporting. And there was made mention of reporting probable cases. And some people now think that we are reporting probable cases. Can you clear up that misconception of what we are doing?
I tell you, I see you did, you back there. I let our experts talk about their.
Hello. We sent the announcement on Monday to share that we were reporting probable cases, as you mentioned, along with active cases. We, the school district, do not determine probable cases. The Delaware General Health District informs us after their contact tracing, their interviews are accomplished, who were probable cases. And so we have added to our dashboard for tomorrow, a definition of what probable cases drive upon the Delaware General Health District's website.
Okay, along those same lines, I'm a mom and I call in and I say, Bridget can't come to school today because she's sick. Do you then call the general health district and say, hey, I got a sick one here, you might want to check it out? Do you do that?
We do not. We cannot do that.
Wait, while you're here, can I ask the question about, I have received a few emails on how, how long it takes to be notified that there was an exposure. Can you go into that process a little bit? Because I think you have to be told from the Board of Health before we can communicate it out?
Correct. So kind of following a case along, when a person is possibly experiencing symptoms or they've been exposed to somebody who has tested positive, they're quarantined. And so, once they're quarantining, their case develops in all sorts of different ways. However, once, for example, somebody has, is in quarantine, has developed symptoms, tests positive. That positive test is then reported to the Delaware General Health District. They then in turn notify us. That's when our email system kicks into motion. So as soon as we're notified, within a 24 hour period, we let the building know, staff and parents know that there's a case in that particular building, but then that 24 hour period. And then we also notify the classes of either that staff member or student in that hybrid chat that was impacted in that same 24 hour period. So someone theoretically may not be at school or work for a couple of days before we know that they are a positive case because they're going through the steps of they're quarantined, they're tested, test results haven't come back. We also are in contact with the other health districts in other counties that were impacted by. And as staff members know, as families know, and they let us know, anecdotally, we record that as well. But we work together with them to get the proper information to the health district so that we can do our notification as expeditiously as possible.
So what if we have a teacher? And they aren't feeling well, they go to the doctor, they say to their principal, hey, I'm not feeling well. Right, and they're going to be tested. We can't communicate that till we know, correct?
Correct.
And what if they then find out, yep, I'm positive? And they tell the principal, is the principal allowed to then start the messaging system?
So the messaging comes from the communications department?
Okay.
Benny, Mr. Wright, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Meyer's team, my team. All of our teams are working together to get that information collected. And so we can start as soon as we know for sure that we have a positive case. And so in some instances, if a teacher shares a screenshot of their positive test, then we'll kick in the notification system. Even if you have a curve in the health district yet.
Running behind.
Absolutely.
They are running behind, yes.
Especially with contact tracing, because it's finding it more and more difficult. People just don't answer their phone.
So this is why we encourage everyone to respond as soon as the health district calls or reaches out to them. I don't want to speak too prematurely on this, but I believe the health district is looking at one perhaps streamlined way of managing the work that they're doing. And we also provide a lot of background work to help them with the contact tracing. That's why we have CDL charts for lunch and CDL charts on the, for the bus rides. We have CDL charts in our classrooms. So all of those things help move the contact tracing on more quickly for the health district.
So speaking about contact tracing, let's talk about lunch. Because when we do move to all kids in school, I think that would be one of our larger obstacles. So help me understand if we have, I know we'll try to minimize how many kids are at a table. And they have dividers. And if they eat lunch and then at the end of the week, Suzie, that sits in spot 25, tests positive, what happens to that table?
It depends on the table and how many kids and how close they are. And that's part of the contact tracing that the health district will do. I think that Mr. Wright shared two weeks ago that the health district representatives came out to several of our buildings and toured them with Mr. Wright. And they specifically looked at the cafeterias, the lunchrooms and the setups of the tables. And so it really will be dependent on where the students were, what the students share in their interview with the health district. That will determine who's quarantined and who's not quarantined. So I can't say, you know, definitely the five people around Suzie or what have you. But I would say that it's likely if we are back full-time and we are sitting next to each other without a seat in between, then obviously that would be a more likely opportunity to have more students quarantined. Probably why Mason, as Mr. Wright mentioned a little bit ago, had so many students in quarantine because it's not going to be as possible to distance in those spaces as we are able to now in the hybrid model.
Oh, I just have two more to ask. First of all, a statement, I don't want to hear out there that, hey, parents, don't tell the health department. Or I don't want to hear that coming from parents or coaches. I told my husband that a dozen times. I don't want to hear that. Because we're all in this together, you know, it's for the good of the whole. But anyway, parents are saying, I need help, my child needs help. How then can they get help academically? Like what, what should the steps be? I, I, I mean, I would love to help them with geometry, but I don't remember geometry. So what are the steps, either hybrid or the CBL program?
See, I, you know, I was starting asking one of the other non-communication related questions, she's supposed to.
I didn't say.
She'll answer them all. She'll just answer them all. Just like, just like in any, in any situation, I would tell our kids, I'd tell our kids, if you need help, you should go to your parents. If you need help, you should go to your teacher. If you need help, you should go to your principal. Those are the people that know your kids the best. So if a parent, if a parent knows their child is struggling, then you can contact their child's teacher so that they can get it addressed immediately. And, you know, I see, I get to see it firsthand because I live with the teacher. And, you know, and I know there are some, some kids who, you know, whether it's a student on I U P or a student who's just struggling. We have brought kids back into the building full-time in certain instances because that's what they need to get their needs met. But it, it, it doesn't do any good to send an email to say my child is struggling when I don't know the child. The person that knows them is their teacher. The person that knows them is their, you know, hopefully their building principal. And they, they, again, I'm going to challenge, I said it for the third or fourth time, I said I challenge the staff to get that fixed. You know, our mission is to facilitate maximum learning for every student. Anybody who fails at anything, I feel, we're not living our mission. We're not being successful in our mission. So I don't want, I don't want that to happen once. But again, I'm going to, I'm going to challenge the kids to step it up too. There are instances I know where kids are struggling because they're not putting in enough effort. It's, this is different, it takes a different type of effort. And again, you know, I look at, so you have children, you know, you understand, I get it, it's hard, it's different. I think some of our kids who traditionally do really, really well and put in a lot of effort are continuing to do really, really well and putting in a lot of effort. And some of our kids who don't do traditionally as well and don't put in some effort are struggling even more. You know, because there's just, there's nothing, there's just nothing normal. So, and again, I wish, I wish I could do it. But, you know, I also, I also want, you know, again, we stood here in June, July and August. And if anybody were to say, we've been in week three of the football playoffs, which is now a week, and the football season. We don't have a tournament game, we have a tournament game, we have a tournament game last night, soccer tournament games going on. We're still playing ball sports. And we had a play at the Green High School. And we're starting, we had those other performances, and we had other performances in our fall. How about all the kids who do the winner stuff had the same opportunity? I don't believe that those opportunities will be there for our kids if we are quarantining hundreds of people and our cases rise. Which will happen when we cannot maintain social distancing all, especially, that's the most problematic.
And to that point with the social distancing, you know, if, if we are expected to do everything we can to protect the students from falls on the playground, when we're doing the playgrounds, you know, so that the surface is going to be different. When we're doing the entrances to our schools so that some, if someone tries to come in, they won't be able to get in. You know, we do all these physical things in our buildings to protect the students during normal times. Why wouldn't we do the same thing to protect our students as best we can when something tries to come in like a virus? That's what got me. And that's what we can do with the social distancing and that. That's what made up my mind with the social distancing to keep it hybrid. Because that provides the best protection.
And I think, you know, again, there are people in our community who don't believe the virus is a threat, too many. And we should just go there with it and let it, you know, whatever you need, whatever the, and, and, again, I think, I can listen to that. I certainly listened to it extensively. And, and, and we would love to just agree with them living in that world. But there are also plenty of people in the community who don't do it. And there is a balance to what we have within our community of people's feelings, I don't know how it's called. I just, as I said, girls are playing hot. I think if we maintain what we're doing, they're going to have hives. As much as it pains for me to watch your husband play basketball, I want to have a basketball season. So, other question.
I just have a statement. Oh, okay, Mr. Brian.
So one, I support bringing your representation, I think is the responsible thing to do. Have we seen any meaningful difference in the performance of the hybrid model versus CBL? You know, we're, we're in the process of tracking some of those things. There's different data points that we can look at. I have better information. I'd like to keep it all captured. First quarter grades, what that looks like. So I'll be able to share that at November, next November meeting. We have done some standardized testing, some early indications. CBL, I think, again, it's been, it's got Jen Fury and her team and Dr. Betty and the people that, it's just been really, they've done a great job and continues to get better. We had a request for orchestra of the elementary. Strings of the elementary. I'm a staff member with time, meaning your kids are doing CBL string. So keep trying to get better at all of that. We'll have, I'll have that data shared. Thank you for that.
I just want to say, I know we read some emails from parents and their kids who were just crying, sobbing or doing work and just to stress that to reach out to the teacher. You know, if your kid's crying, that just, to be that, it breaks my heart that I'm going to see kids doing that. But that communication is so important to communicate back to the teacher.
Yeah, and I, I, again, I really, that's, you know, I, I, I just listened to my wife at the Parents in Chicago conference with a, with a parent the other day and I just, I mean, I heard her say, I, I, she said it once, she said it a lot of times. Doesn't, whatever you contact, send me a text, send me an email, maybe a call, this is my cell phone number. I, whoever it is, you know, it's something to say. This is the name of the student currently struck. I know that just, that asks for all this. And again, I don't, you lose the teacher. I give it to yourself. So, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot of challenges.
I appreciate your position on this as well. And I have a different viewpoint as a parent of a struggling learner than I do as a board member. But I'm wearing my board hat right now, so wanting to make that very clear. And when we do come back and look at this for the second semester, I, I hope that we have a plan for quarantine students. Because if that number goes up, I don't know if there's some type of 14 day online program. I just like, we're going to have to come up with something because it is cold flu season. And I think we could be, it's still, unless everybody's really good over the holidays. And, but we could be looking at that and what do we do with all those texts? But how does that people address even with the hybrid students?
Right now, they're, you know, they're, they're, there's already virtual activities built into the virtual days. I would say teachers are managing it right now because we're keeping the number at a manageable level. So that you don't have 600 in quarantine and whatever the high number would be. You know, and again, there's a bigger risk, quarantining students is one thing, but what about quarantining staff? And so when a staff member is not quarantined, how are they able to look at destruction? We have stuff in the building, but then, you know, if they're quarantined, are they able to go over any destruction development? So, yeah, those are all things that we're working on planning forward. You know, the other, and again, there's a, there would have been immense logistical operational challenges had we gone any earlier than first semester. Because there's going to be a movement of CBL kids back into the building. There may be a movement of people out of the building. You know, you remember, we went, we initially said, we wanted to bring in the CBL for a year. That was the right decision. But we, we got a pushback on it, we got, but that was the right decision. Because this moving people in and out, we're going to have situations where somebody may have to change a teacher at the semester. And especially if they're coming back from CBL, going back in the building or coming out of the building, going into CBL, which will, you know, we're not sure we can do. You know, there are, at Orange High School alone, if you were back full in, there are 94 class sections that are 30 students. 30 kids in a class. 94, now, I don't know how many section they have, but that's a big number of a lot of kids in the class. Across the elementary division, it's about eight or over 27, 28 kids. At the middle school though, now there, we run our middle school numbers high in the core areas. 30 kids in a class and unified arts areas, unified arts class with 35 kids in a class. So, again, you can't do that social distancing all in. So, and that may be something we just end up living with because the virus is at a different stage. Hopefully we have, you know, some vaccine or what, what's going to happen, you know, once we get through the next few months. And I've got to follow that.
So, my son walked into my room last night at eleven and said, Mom, is it true, Mr. Ray, sending kids back to school next Thursday, five days a week? I said, I think that's a rumor, but I just want you to know that that's what the kids are talking about, just like snow days.
Is what?
That's, that's the new snow days, when they're going back from the day. It's five Thursday. I don't know, what's, is that the last day of the market period? Get it right up, right? Oh, yeah. He must have left after next Thursday, but I just wiped it.
It's, you know, and again, I, I do appreciate everybody's perspective on it. I don't always appreciate the tone of emails that you guys get, especially because I can take a lot more than you do, so I can, I can take it a little, it's a little easier for me to take than what you guys are subject to. I appreciate the fact that you're not like a lot of other boards that are making decisions for their superintendent. I believe this is a decision that I can take and make. And, but I also appreciate your counsel and you wisdom and thought through this and, you know, how you helped all of us, made your way through this. I think this decision gives us stability. You know, just like when we announced in July, you know, when we announced that we announced July from the beginning, we weren't sure, we gotta know what we're gonna do. And we'll, you know, get an update in November and update in December and see where things are and have a clearer picture about second semester. This is where we are. Until January.
Thank you, are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
How long has this been following the board president, working months ago?
Yes. But I, I hope people are still listening. I know you were the main event, so we might have lost some viewers. But we, as board members, have received a great number of emails and we've been reading them. By the way, if you sent me one today, I have even had the opportunity to check my emails. So, I apologize for that, but read them this evening. But in doing so, I have following takeaways over the last couple of weeks. People are definitely growing weary, and I get it, I am there with you. I had a friend say, and this was a really, the statement really resonated with me, that society is experiencing social inflammation. I think that pretty much sums it up. So everyone is struggling with fatigue from what is now the new norm. The mental health challenges continue to present themselves. There's more stress at work, everybody's sick of Zoom meetings, and there's the stress of the unknown, people are just hurting. The only benefit from being on this side of the table, which right now we only, is we do have a little bit of inside information and I can, you know, spell rumors that I'm hearing. But after tonight, there'll be fifty percent of our community that is upset, fifty percent. It is not, so I feel like everyone's going to remain conflicted. What I can say is there are no big egos on this board and we fully support Mr. Ray and his administrators because we know they are considering every factor, they're looking at the whole picture and how to do the greatest good. They're looking at the benefits, they're looking at the deficits, and in both learning models, and there's no clear answer. So then this week, I also jumped on my daughter's parent Facebook page. And she's at the University of Kentucky, and I'm looking at what those parents are saying. And they're asking, and remember, they're paying tuition, and they're asking the same questions. Is your child struggling mentally? Do they feel isolated and alone? Have they been able to meet friends? Because campus is kind of like a ghost town. Are your children teaching themselves? My kid's doing everything online, they're having to try. And the freshmen I really feel for because they haven't made those social connections to get in groups, to get support outside of class. So it brings me to my point, where universities are usually on leading edge of education. They're struggling and they haven't found a solution either. And they're dealing with a much smaller age range and much higher technical abilities of the students. So, and they're not feeding all kids in this finite period of time. So they haven't figured it out and I know that we're, we're in the same boat. So with that, I looked up the definition of opinion because I've received so many emails that people are sharing their opinions. And the definition is it is a view or a judgment formed about something not necessarily based on fact or knowledge. So in my opinion, I'm gonna show that. In my opinion, I think this virus is gonna be upon us for a while. And I think it's upon us because the world and especially our country is lacking sense of community. And I think the answer to COVID, how to navigate it and eradicate it, is through community. It's gonna take everybody working together to figure out how we do all of this, not fighting amongst each other. So I do see that happening, but I see it happening in community. And the last thing I wanted to say was about social responsibility. As I look at some, and I'm not referring to all, but some of the posts on social media, I'm dumbfounded at how critical and aggressively people are behaving towards each other. It made me think back to when my kids were teens and they were setting up Instagram accounts. And on those accounts, we had a lot of conversation, we continue to have conversation about if you don't have anything nice to say, don't say it. Be careful what you say on there, it stays out there, is it kind? Doesn't have value, does it need to be said? Or is it just hurting somebody else's feeling? So, today, I did a community award to somebody in marketing, like in the K. And she was giving me some statistics, and she said that people are six times more likely to click on an untrue statement than a true statement. And just because it's out there does not mean that it is true. So I continue to preach in my house that believe none of what you read and half of what you see. And we as parents, we're role models. It is our job to set the tone and to demonstrate to kids, don't be, don't be a bully, don't be intolerant, but rather respect that other people have a different position than you do. And so you can be part of the divide or you can work towards community. So, I know this conversation is a little bit long-winded, but now that you've heard Mr. Ray's decision, I hope you really listened and listened to the multitude of facts that he took into consideration and look at it from not just yours, but somebody else's perspective. Be a good leader and a good role model. That's all I have to say. So next on our agenda is a welcome back to the podium, Mr. Ray, for your superintendent's report.
Yes, I'll make this quick because I've been up here too long already, but just wanna highlight some of our, the letting of mission, baby staff, they have a new district. Second and Seven is a program, a reading program for elementary schools. So tomorrow, the Williams Freedom Trail and Wlando. And virtual Second and Seven visits, so the books are sent to the school, students follow along with the books, and teachers play the video of the athletes reading to them, high school athletes reading to them. So proud of our students who are involved in the Second and Seven program. At Wlando Elementary, again, we had a virtual assembly, so both the hybrid students and C D L students attended a assembly on Spanic and Latinx Heritage Month. So, we had some students sharing about their experiences and their favorite traditions. So, we celebrated Spanic and Latinx Heritage. As Mrs. Patrick mentioned, good timing, good segue, maybe you paid there. Great community volunteer, as the board does every year. A building nominates two of the board to recognize outstanding community service award winners. So we see there a long list of community members that were nominated by our community members, the local principals and other community members. So, just highlight a few of those there. So my action items, so we have some certified community resource action items and just classified staff, which is just all our traditional action items there. And then a couple of transportation is in brackets, which is again, a traditional thing that happens here. Normal board business. And then finally, some important dates. We are hosting our Business Advisory Council tomorrow, that will be a virtual meeting, as we mentioned. And the first quarter is coming up, and we do have a teacher work day, it's contractual work day. And I know it's frustrating that we are having days off in this hybrid attendance model. I know that is frustrating, but this is one of our contractual workdays that is in our calendar for the staff, comes out, ready for it, get ready for the next, ready for it. The report card will be available, and our next board meeting is November 12. Okay, questions? Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our treasurer's report. Welcome to the podium, Emily Hafield.
We have a lot of words. Oh goodness, so not as exciting as Mr. Ray's updates, but we'll go through them nevertheless. So, we are working through our bond refunding for our Series 2013 bonds. And we have had both of our ratings calls with movies and with S and P. And while we will not be upgraded by either, we will maintain our higher ratings that we currently have. So, double A one with movies, stable condition, and a triple A rating with S and P. Press releases should be on their way out. I believe movies is officially released. And I apologize, I have a strict mind not to see if S and P is completely available in your report. But, you know, overall, for the district, that's a great place to be. Again, they continue to cite good management, strong management of both the physical and operations divisions as the reason why they keep us graded high during the pandemic where there's a lot of economic volatility going on out there. So I'm happy to share that. Once those reports are available in full, I will hand those to the board and we can talk about that in more detail in November. We have a couple of action items for you. On the agenda, we have our total financials. We are still awaiting our final settlements from Delaware County Tax Collections. We originally thought we would, even with the extension that they applied for in terms of collecting the taxes from the taxpayers, we thought we would be settled in September. That did not occur. And as of today, we are still waiting on that final settlement in Delaware County. So hopefully we'll have that resolved and I'll have positive information to share. If we do get that and there is an update that might affect the forecast, we'll make sure that we include that. Again, House Bill 164, Section 19 payments make a positive influence on our revenue. You can see that on the financial statements are above trend on that because of the Section 164 payments. We're continuing to see some delays in pandemic-related billing. Not all of our bills are coming in, we're seeing that our encumbrances remain a little higher than we've seen in the past. So we're assuming people are still, you know, working from home, remotely. Things are coming in slower and we'll continue to work through that process. So that's generated some of our underbudgeted areas in our purchase services as well as our supplies and material. Our COVID relief funds, as we promised, we continue to track that from each month and put it in our executive summary, how we are contacting with our coronavirus funds. The coronavirus relief funds are fully expended through the month of September, and we have approximately two hundred and thirty-two thousand remaining in our asset funds. So for you and for our audience, the coronavirus relief funds were the million-dollar funds that are federal funds, they had to be expended by December 31st, or you lose those funds. So we made sure that we expended those each and first, and then we'll work on our asset funds. You know, at this point, we have the majority of the big purchases in terms of masks and C S guards and all of those supplies. So what remains outstanding would be, and it is the cleaning supplies or additional supplies we might need with the C D L program that have come up that maybe we weren't quite aware we were into. So we still feel we're in a decent position with that. We'll go more into our coronavirus funds and our general impact as we move to the first meeting of the Friday forecast. Then amended appropriations, the board meeting minutes are also on the agenda for your group this evening. Again, just as a reminder, we usually bring those forward in the context of the higher revised code to make sure that we are following our accounting standards and our open and public community standards in prior forty-five minutes. Are there any questions that I can answer regarding the action items?
Next, the next item is our public participation. Oh, I thought it was the, yeah. I will catch up. Do we have any public participation this evening?
We do, I believe we have three items, search submissions for public participation, and Mrs. Banks will read those for us.
Hey, welcome to the podium, Emily Hafield.
I do have three submissions, as Emily mentioned. And the first one is from Trisha Frank at 5939 Screamside Drive. First, thank you for all of your time and hard work, all of you are appreciated. Today, I wanted to speak up about the possible return of C D L students to in-person learning. The disruption for all involved is beyond tremendous. I cannot imagine how complicated dealing with middle school and high school schedules will be. My children are elementary students and I worry about the disruption there as well. How will C D L students fit back into classrooms? Will all the classes be rearranged? How will online classes and teachers be affected? I understand everyone wants things to return to normal, but that doesn't seem to be something that will happen soon. Everyone has had to make major adjustments this year. Asking the kids to change teachers or classrooms in the middle of the school year seems a bit much, and I hope sincere thought is going into planning what will happen if there is a large influx of C D L students returning in the spring. The second one is from Katie DeDavil. I tried my best. She is a parent of two children in elementary school in the O L S D. Her address is 75 Betendorf Circle, Powell, Ohio, 10065. As the superintendent and school board consider options for moving from a hybrid attendance model to the daily attendance model, I'd like to express my concerns and urge further consideration of the issue. It seems counterintuitive to send children back to school five days a week when the news of school reports of rises in COVID cases throughout Ohio, with many counties frequently moving between orange and red on the Ohio Public Health Advisory System. Although the data may show that children are generally safe in a school environment, the overall health of the community must also be a consideration. As the holidays approach, the potential increases for children to expose elderly or at-risk relatives in the community. Like most other parents, we weigh the pros and cons of C D L versus traditional school with the understanding that the attendance model would change. But I certainly did not anticipate returning to daily attendance as COVID cases rise and preseason begins. My primary concern is the ability to social distance in a full classroom, especially given the CDC's updated definition of close contact published on October 21st. If the decision is made to move forward with the daily attendance model, I urge the district to consider issuing more robust guidance in the following areas. I rate both suggestions from my family's personal experience with a male child who was tested earlier this fall. I rate both suggestions from my family's personal experience with an ill child who was tested earlier this fall. First, develop a plan for educating children who are subject to quarantine. Under the hybrid model, children who are self-isolating at home have consistent lesson plans to follow on their planned home days. The only additional work they needed to make up was for the in-school days missed, which honestly was a struggle for our family, even though it was only covered part of the week. This will be an even greater challenge if children are missing 100% of in-school work. Rather than having teachers rushing to put together packets of assignments for families that are isolating, a standard plan with access to information electronically would likely be beneficial for both students and teachers. Second, publish clear policy for families on what to do with symptomatic children, how to handle pending COVID tests, potential exposure and travel. Although only my daughter was ill, we kept my son home from school while her COVID test was pending. I was surprised by the number of people I encountered who were confused as to why I kept my son home. This leads me to believe that many families would send a child to school while immediate family members holding results without understanding the potential impact. Although I know that updated information was published on September 18th, broader dissemination appears to be necessary. I am also concerned about travel during the holidays. ODH recommends a 14-day quarantine period for travelers returning from the state for which Ohio has issued a travel advisory. While this can potentially be monitored via the Alternative Learning Experience Forum, how does the district plan to address travel during the holidays? Again, this appears to be an area where more definitive policy is necessary. I appreciate your time and consideration. And third, public participation this evening. Good evening, local school district board of education, superintendent, district administrators, teachers, students and parents. My name is Mark H. Butler. I am an African American living in Delaware County, Ohio. My mailing address is 825 North Health Road, Delaware, Ohio, 43015. On July 15th, 2020, Catherine Kandiski of the Columbus Dispatch reports that, quote, "The Ohio Board of Education condemned hate speech and racism in schools." Directing the Department of Education on Tuesday to review state curriculum models and tests for racial bias and to recommend ways to, again, quote, "ensure that racism and the struggle for equality are accurately addressed," end quote. The State Board of Education in their vote of 12 to 5, quote, "strongly recommends that all Ohio school districts begin a reflection and internal examination of their own involving teacher, parents, students and community to review curriculum, hiring practices, discipline strategies, suspensions and expulsions, classroom resources including textbooks and professional development," end quote. Furthermore, Laura Kohler, President of the Ohio State Board of Education says that, quote, "We must confront our own bias. We must learn how racism impacts society and how to recognize and eliminate racism perhaps in our own hearts," end quote. "We must highlight that racism continues to exist within our local school districts and we must do more to eradicate it." "The diversity programming of the all-entire local school district must be more action oriented with practical application. The mental, social and emotional health of every student and staff member is at stake." "The killings of Black Americans by American police and the racial disparities of COVID-19 among Black Americans, Indigenous and other people of color has gone far beyond a reasonable doubt standard. This disease of racism continues to exist in the United States of America." "The killings of Black Americans by American police and the racial disparities of COVID-19 among Black Americans, Indigenous and other people of color has gone far beyond a reasonable doubt that this disease of racism continues to exist in the United States of America." That paragraph was printed twice. In the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., quote, "Judge me not by the color of my skin, but by the content of my character," end quote. Rutherford Hayes, born in Delaware, Ohio and was the 19th president of the United States, said, quote, "I believe education is the best way to feel the rifts in American society and allow individuals to improve themselves," end quote. Thanks for your service to our community. And that is all.
Thank you. We will welcome Okay, we're welcome back. Do you want to stay seated or are you coming up for the five-year forecast? Back down again. You're welcome to bounce and back and forth. We're being here, sir. So thank you. We are back in the community to do the first reading of the five-year forecast. One thing I want to mention to the community and to the Board of Education as a gentle reminder. A year ago, the Ohio Department of Education allowed the extension of the fall forecast submission into November. Last year, we chose to keep our submission within the month of October because it would help us with our LEPG to have that information available to the community as we had conversations regarding the finances. So we are not late. We're just following the new protocol that is available to us. And as we have one board meeting in November, this meeting becomes the first reading of the forecast. Before you, I wanted to start this time by talking about the purpose and objectives and methodologies of my five-year forecast. It's important to understand that this forecast is meant to engage the Board of Education and community in long-range planning and discussions on financial issues facing the district. It does serve as our basis for determining the district's ability to sign certificate ORC 5705412. Let me take a pause and explain what that means. This is a certificate that we are required by law to say that we have the funds to pay for expenditures. It's why we do purchase orders and we encumber our funds as we move through our fiscal cycles. So this ORC is the actual Ohio revise code that relates to that and regulates that operation. And so the five-year forecast helps us make sure that we have those funds to do so. It is also to provide a method for the Ohio Department of Education and Ohio Auditor of State to identify districts that have potential financial problems. So when you hear about districts in fiscal emergency or going into fiscal watch, this is the tool that they're using to do it to help guide them through that. The methodology for the forecast is to predict or try to predict based upon historical trends and current factors. The information is extrapolated for estimates in the subsequent years. Variables change multiple times throughout the fiscal year. And so it is the intent to provide a roadmap, not a financial actual report. This is a planning tool that is here to help us manage our assets wisely and model fiscal responsibility and transparency. So with that in mind, I'll, we'll take a look at where we were in the spring. We filed our May forecast in the midst of all kinds of crazy information going on. We lost $3 million from the state. We got $2 million back. We had no idea when our election results would be. A panel of those got pushed back. And so we were unsure for a while where our ballot would land. But in that, we had in our five-year forecast of the results, the positive results of the collection of the operating revenue as a part of these numbers. We did not know at the time that we would be getting $2 million back from the state in state funding. We know that that is factored into emerging fundamentals. We're updating that for our 2021 formation. So as you can see, we had predicted that we would be in the red spending more. We were bringing in revenue across the five years, fiscal year 2020 through 2024. We closed fiscal year 2020 a bit ahead of where we thought we would be, roughly $3 to $4 million positive. And so that has helped our cash reserve moving forward into fiscal year 2021. So let's talk about some of those differences between the spring forecast and the fall forecast when it comes to revenue. So as we mentioned earlier in discussing our September financials, we are still awaiting finer collections to confirm our assumptions that we have in the forecast regarding real estate. Right now, we are looking at a positive earnings of about $465,000, which is fairly immaterial to that line. So all things being equal, we think our real estate will come in as expected. When we receive that final settlement, again, we will let the board know. And if there is a material adjustment that needs to be made to the forecast regarding that issue, we will make sure that we include it for the final presentation and we bring it forward for your approval. Unrestricted grants and aid. We have the $2 million that we are anticipating coming back through the House Bill 164, Section 118. And then our other operating revenue coming down by about $2.3 million in anticipation of having our investment earnings really being next to nothing. We are getting about 25%, maybe, or 25%, actually not 25%, that would be great. But less than a percentage points on our investment earnings. I'm sure the community understands that as they are focusing that on their personal investments or on their, even just their savings and checking accounts. So we'll continue to monitor that. Current trends are showing us that that low interest rate is probably going to hold for the next two years. And so we factored that in moving forward through the other operating revenue and kept that low and then eventually increasing that in fiscal years 23 through 25. So let's take a look at our expenditures. What's different between the spring forecast and the fall forecast? So a little bit more differences here, as you can see, but I was too bad with it. We have taken a look at our COVID expenditures, what we might experience, where we actually land with our coronavirus relief fund or actually the CARES Act funding, which has multiple separate that include the CRF. But we are adding classified substitutes, adding that expenditure in about $500,000. That's what's increasing our personnel services over the May forecast, making sure that we are prepared to take on any additional substitute that might be needed as our staff become willing to be quarantined, et cetera, or just need additional hands to help the students through this hybrid model. Employee benefits is down approximately $1.4 million. This is largely due in part to having a 2.5 premium increase in our medical expenditures. We kind of discussed this a little bit as we approved that new rate by the board. We had previously factored in 7.25% as our premium increase. And so that difference of 5% really helped us out in the employee benefit section in coming in less than we had thought we would in May. Purchase services, that's where our certified substitutes are booked. We work with the EFC of Central Ohio to procure our substitute teachers. And so we have the biggest estimation coming into this line. We added approximately $1.5 billion of expenditures to that line anticipating that we would need that for our additional long-term subs, building subs, as well as the CDL program. And then again, just to, excuse me, staff asset to be, as we continue to work through the pandemic. Our other objects is down roughly $400. That's having, that is a result of having additional restoration funding than we anticipated. So our federal funds are covered more than we thought in that object. And then our operating transfers out. This is a line that we added to after a great discussion with our financiers and audit committee and also our board president and vice president taking a look at where our food service and our athletic funds are anticipated to be at the end of the fiscal year. You know, as we think about what they're experiencing through this pandemic, they're really getting hit hard with revenue losses. So while our food service department is able to provide free lunches and free breakfasts to our students, they still have to pay for their staff and benefits. The federal subsidies that they receive help offset the cost of the food and the product, but they don't necessarily help to offset all of that overhead cost. And so we're monitoring it, taking a look at it and anticipating that they might, might be another transfer out at the end of this fiscal year. Right now, they are in the red as a fund for the month. But we do not have their federal subsidy posted because they've just been doing the paperwork to get all that turned in. So it's a little unclear as to how much in the red that we'll be. We'll monitor that and be able to report that a little bit better once we've had October closed. And then of course, athletic funds. We're excited for the students that they're able to participate in those activities. But again, gate receipts are very diminished due to COVID structuring and having a social distance. So we're anticipating just under $2 million that we might have to transfer out at the end of the fiscal year. We will not automatically do that. We'll have to bring that to the board. And if we make that transfer or need that transfer, we'll bring it to the board for approval in May or June as we get closer to the fiscal year end.
So that's the change since May. What's the total we transferred out to food? Because you had one of the in there in May, right?
Yes, we did 1.5 million transferred to food service fund at the end of fiscal year 20. This 1.9 we're estimating about 1.5 going to food service and then maybe 400,000 going to athletic funds. That's our current estimation for that split.
In the This isn't just the various forecasts, it's the total to be transferred?
It shows up as a variance because it carries down through the forecast to total expenditures. And so when you look at last year with the 1.5, it's really 500,000, I guess, as a variance compared to where we closed the box. Yes, in that federal program was extended through the entire school year on the free lunches. It was supposed to end at the end of the, at the end of the calendar year. So when we discussed it at the finance meeting, we thought we should put something in because we're going to be impacted just by looking at how we were impacted last year. So you know, the good news is that they have the same health insurance that we do. And then having a lower premium increase will help them too, right? Because they're including the cost benefits of hitting the 006 line. So that will help them as compared to where they might have thought they would have been without that low reduction or that low premium increase. So we'll keep an eye on it. Again, our actuals as we bring our monthly reports forward, on the fund sum report, which is approximately the four of the monthly board financials. There is a report there that goes through the general fund and all of our other funds are reported in terms of cash balance, receipts in, expenditures out, and where their new cash balance is. So we're monitoring that month over month and can see that in detail moving forward. Are there other questions about the expenditures? So let's take a look at our call results and where we have landed. We like to look at our revenues and our expenditures and totality, our unreserved cash balances and days cash on hand. Our revenue line is not significantly different. We do have the $2 million that is in 2021 for our state aid. But then moving forward in 2022 through 25, it's, that line in detail is pretty significantly flat. We've increased it a little bit because we currently have some minimal growth in the current funding model. That's $30 per student. And we also know that casino revenue is coming back up. But that division of the state's revenue is not hurting right now. The last report I saw is actually that they are coming in over what they expected. Uh, the last report I saw is actually that they are coming in over what they expected. So that's good. So we have a little bit of increase, but again, it's not, um, a huge swing from what we saw in May. And then our expenditures, um, coming across on our expenditures, all of those variances that we just discussed are in there. We also have one time or overhead costs of opening elementary 16 in fiscal year 2022. And we have kept the opening of expenditures for elementary 17 and middle school 6 within fiscal year 2024. We know that we are looking at our CBL program and we're reviewing lots of different information to try to help us make a better choice about whether or not elementary 17 may be delayed, pushed out a year. Um, but we felt it prudent to leave it where it is until we have that decision made. So we have a clearer picture of where we are today with the current plans in place. As that moves forward and we continue to review that, uh, there may be an update in May, but for, for now, we're leaving it where we originally had it planned. So those costs are in there. Um, as you take a look at fiscal year 2021, the expenditures are outpacing our revenue. You'll notice that it's roughly $2 million. Think about that transfer out that we talked about for food service and athletic ones. That's what's making up that difference between May and now what we're looking at in November. Um, 2022 has a positive, meaning that we are bringing in more than we are spending. And then you can see as we move forward, we're starting to spend down what we are bringing in from that new levy that we passed in the spring of 2020. Um, that occurrence is pretty normal. Um, because we are so heavily reliant on public tax dollars, it's not uncommon for us to have a levy, see the cash reserve balance tick up. It looks really great and then we start to spend it down over the next three to four to five years because it's our main source of revenue. And our state funding just doesn't keep up with our growth.
What's that, the revenue increase in '22 versus '21? So the first collection of revenue?
Mm-hmm, yes. So we will, we will receive a half collection, um, of the levy results in January of this year of 20, January 2021, January 30, we will be half, the first half collection. And then fiscal year 2022, we will have a full year of collections with the new levy.
And most of this is just what I learned from the auditor, because I would be pretty old.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Four to 11%. How should people think about that relative to their taxes?
So when you're thinking about, um, your reappraisal, that's what I'm pointing.
Well, I'm asking, uh, just the, people are assuming 4% increase or 1% increase is a commensurate increase in taxes.
No, it's not because of the appraisal, so.
I just wanted to ask you, I, I, I didn't answer that question. Oh, you must have been teaching class this season.
So very quickly, see if I can summarize it in a nutshell, Mrs. Fiesel, please interject if I miss a point. But what occurs on a reappraisal here is the, um, auditors will take a look at the valuation across our community. They'll look at properties, um, in different neighborhoods, different subsections, how's one being valued over the other. Um, anecdotally, I've heard folks that are upset because their valuation went up 25% and now they have to pay more and some that have thawed on a little bit. Um, what we know from the county auditor is that he is expecting overall for the community, not every person will see the same rate, but overall for our community, about a 14% increase in property valuations. What we've put in the forecast is 12. We wanted to be a little conservative because we just don't know the impact of COVID quite yet. What we know about the real estate market is that residential houses are hardly on the market long. They're going very quickly. Folks are still getting asking price or slightly above. Um, but that's an anecdotal note that we have, not something we know in going into the future. Um, so we put in a 12%. We think it's a reasonable estimate based on the pandemic and economic conditions right now. So having said that, our neighbor might get a 25% increase. We might see an increase on their, on their valuation. It will equal out amongst the community. And then as you think about paying your taxes, probably what we'll see for the new levy is that we will actually end up with a rollback or an effective return on that because the overall community value was high. We don't have that information yet, but that's what we're kind of anticipating coming in once we get final valuations.
So we thought that billage comes down, a lot of values go up, and really flexing.
Correct. Correct.
You cannot allow people to pay anything.
Except on the five and seven. You're allowed to grow, but five mils is, I mean, it's correct. So if you think about it this way, we have, um, a voted mileage before the levy of about 84 mils. We're collecting approximately 53 mils in effective mileage rate, right? So there is a difference there of about 30 mils that it kept rolling back because the valuation in the community kept rising. And we cannot collect more than we say that we're going to when we submit the ballot. That valuation is set, that's the dollar amount that we will collect. The inside mils is five out of that 53. So of that 53%, five mils might get an increase, but the remaining 40 some will stay at a level that is consistent with what we said again. Uh, so that House Bill 925 is very tricky. Um, there's more detailed information on our website, through the treasures webpage for Loncanti. There is a tax, real estate tax 101. It gives you some more resources and it walks you through how does House Bill 925 apply and what we expect with that. Um, it's a little more detailed, um, than I just explained, but there is more information available to the community whenever they have a moment to check in and read through that. Did you have another question, Mr. Boring? I know, right? It's under your glasses and around your chin and it's, it's frustrating. Um, so with that, let's talk about our unreserved cash balance. This is the line item that we watch and we monitor in addition to our revenue versus expenditure. What is our cash reserve? How much money do we have on hand to pay our bills at the end of the fiscal year going into the next year? Um, we have converted that to days cash on hand based upon 365 days. So as you can see, our, we're going from 120 days down to about 18 days in fiscal year 2025 with our current assumptions in place. Our informal policy for days cash on hand is two to three months. Uh, we have 65 days or two months, just over two months at the end of fiscal 2024. But we are exceeding that in fiscal year 2023, which will help us meet our campaign promise of three years. So we feel good about that. We're, um, able to make that community, um, assurance that we are meeting that three-year campaign promise and trying to work to get that better as we can throughout the forecast. So we thought I'd like to talk about some risk assessments. Um, I don't know how much I can say volatile economy or over and over again, it feels like a broken record. Um, but everybody's familiar, you all know that it's there. Um, we are monitoring the state budget and state economy. We're giving access such as unemployment rates. It's time to get our hands around where are we in reality and where might be we going. Um, it continues to change and so it's, you know, there's no guarantee the state won't pull back more funds, but at this point in time, we feel that we are in a good position, putting everything steady and flat. Um, our real estate valuations, uh, some things that might come into play a little bit more than we have seen in the past. Um, reappraisal, um, delays, getting some information slower than we thought. Um, perhaps delinquencies. Um, right now, we usually collect our delinquencies at roughly, historically about 97%. The last couple of years, we've been close to that 100% level in collecting those delinquencies. Not really sure where we're looking. Um, we'll have to wait on our final settlement to get a better idea of where we are with them to project going forward. So we're using our, um, 97% of lowers historical percentage or trend that we have to predict that in the move forward. Um, border revision cases are related to entities coming forward and taking their valuation to court and trying to get it reduced, thereby a less tax dollars. Um, those are a little bit, there's a little more activity here than I've seen, um, over the last couple of years. I think evaluations are confirmed and start going out to taxidermy, might see more of that. Um, with our commercial properties, with our residential properties, we do not take those to border revision cases. And then again, the decline of class two, class two is our commercial properties. So as businesses succeed or don't succeed, um, we might see some more pushback on those valuations moving forward. So that's a concern that we're going to continue to monitor and try to make sure that we keep in front of us. State funding, um, we are, you know, the last report we had on state funding, we were hopeful the House Bill 305, um, was getting more momentum. That is the first school funding plan bill. It did not go for open session, I believe, or for comments. Um, not really sure what to expect with that, but we know that it's being brought forward. Now that the tax representative is up, um, and he is a part of that sponsor or original author. So we're still hopeful that it's going to move forward, just at what speed you have to be at times. Our stacking costs are always a cost of, of an area of risk for us, um, more or less because they're the biggest segment of our expenditures. We now have three associations that we are negotiating with, Norwegian Student Enrollment Impact Stacking as our student growth continues to rise and we continue to have to meet those demands. Um, and then looking at healthcare costs related to those stacking increases. Um, we have those modeled very well. We continue to take a look at our new hiring plan each time we do a forecast. Mr. Meyer is very closely monitoring that and we're in collaboration to make sure we understand what our needs are and how that could impact our financial services going forward or our financial results going forward. And then of course, the ESCO contracted services. We contract with ESCO. This is the line item that goes down into, um, other objects that deals with our preschool services and any of our ancillary services that we use for special education services such as OTs, PTs, um, hearing and vision. So that's an area of major growth for our community and for our school district, which continues to make that rise. Um, we are offsetting that with our federal funds from our IDEA grants right now and hope that that will prove to be a more effective model of those funds moving forward. Um, but that is a big section of that line item. So now on to some supplemental information. Um, we wanted to share this and add this to the forecast, which we don't traditionally do. We have expenditures that are outside of the general fund. So the five-year forecast model itself only includes general operating dollars. But we know that CARES Act funding is a big hot topic. It's an important topic to keep in front of us and to keep in front of the community. We also know through talking with our finance and audit committee that corporations or general businesses have to include the CARES Act funding in their general reporting. We do not. Our auditor states that it needs to be a separate prom set it over here in another bucket and report it separately until we get to our comprehensive annual financial report, that big 160-page report we put together at the end of the fiscal year. We won't see it in the forecast. You'll see it in our monthly fund balances, the report in, um, each three or four of the month-to-month expenditures. So having said all that, um, we had a very wise committee member ask us to use it as a supplemental table at the back of the forecast to identify what is that funding? What do we expect coming forward into the general fund? And so that's what this table represents. It's our way of trying to marry those, um, expectations of reporting and make sure we're transparent with our community in this document. And so as you can see, our CARES Act funding is about 1.4 million in total. The components of that are broken out for you to see. And then additional pandemic costs in the general fund or forecast. This is what we put into the model, um, that we will not have additional federal funding for. So in totality, it's about 3.9 million dollars with the outward operating transfers out, which is a, you might be. So I hope you guys find that, um, table helpful and I hope our community understands helps. It helps break that out of what's federal funding and what's general funding expenditure. With that, if there's any questions, we're out. Everybody asleep and you want to go? Just so everybody knows, um, the school funding bill is going to proceed after the wing duck, is what they are saying now, as of today. After wing duck. Uh, during wing duck, so after the election, it's wing, uh, duck session. So the meeting are two weeks in November and then two, two and a half weeks in December. And they're going to secure it in the House and the Senate at the same time. Oh, that's good. That's really good. That's nice that they're, I think that's a great, so they'll have the bill, they'll insert the bill into the budget. Great. Well, we look forward to that. I hope, um, I hope it's successful. I know that they need a lot more, um, support of that. Our OAS organization has issued a statement in support of it. So hopefully that it will be able to have that implemented for us and for all the other differences we see. Are there other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Thank you.
I would pay to that, um, I don't know about the produce, uh, of the cause. So my staff, it was a great job crediting staff every time he was there for them at staff meeting. And, uh, and switch we made to the higher level plan. We talked about the board, we announced, so right, we're huge on that topic. For all users, we got that negotiated in. It's a, it is a gift that keeps on giving. Cause those, those costs were, were potentially out of control. So that was a, actually, we're, which is on the negotiating.
Yes, very happy with it. And I think our, you know, it's not just, I think we're seeing the claims, um, drop. Again, we kind of discussed this earlier, but the drop in claims partly due to, excuse me, um, some of the, um, elective procedures being closed at the beginning of the pandemic. But our staff are truly educating themselves on what is the cost of this service? Do I really need it? Um, if I go down the street, can I get it a little bit cheaper at a facility that's just as effective and efficient in healthcare? So we're really excited to share that with them. Thank you. Very good. And so, um. Spender action items. Yes, please. I'd like to present treasurer action items A through C, please.
So.
One second.
Any questions?
Please call it off.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is superintendent.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to present superintendent action items A through D for this.
So. Please call it off.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Dr. Wise? Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, um, I'm, I will in a moment ask the motion to go to the executive session as submitted by Section 121.22 of the Highway revised Code to consider the employment compensation of public employees. to consider the employment compensation of public employees. Also in section one twenty one, written to preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees and, um, section one twenty one point twenty two to discuss this ten of employee. May I have a motion? They.
Take your role. Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And we will return to the stream, hold into return. Uh, our next meeting is your number four.
Hey, um, we are here to adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn? Kevin, thank you. In a second. Thank you, Mr. King. Please call the roll.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And I will announce that, uh, Mrs. Fiesel had to excuse herself about a half hour ago. So she is not here to adjourn and it is ten oh five P M.